Good. Deputy Clerk Anderson, call the council meeting to order, please.
Lennon.
Here.
Wayward.
Here.
Asia.
Here.
Fate.
Here.
Pavone.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Aronella.
Here.
Carmichael.
Here.
Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could please keep in our thoughts and prayers all the men and women we have on the street tonight. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna start out open forum by stating that the city of Berwyn is a welcoming city, we will enforce the welcoming city, we will stand by our welcoming city as well as whatever amendment is going to hopefully pass tonight. Also, just so you folks are aware, the city of Berwyn includes the Berwyn Police Department. We will stand by the Illinois law that was passed for the Way Forward Act, the Trust Act, and the Voices Act, which says that we will not cooperate or assist any federal agency when it comes to anything regarding immigration, or deportation, or anything of that nature. Our Berwyn police, the chief and I have already discussed this, he's already had all his commanders and his men and women be aware of the Illinois law that Attorney General Kwame Raul sent out to everybody, I put one in every alderman's desk, we also put it on our website, and the PD has put it out on their website, and we're asking that you share it with your constituents. There's a lot of fear in our community going on right now, and understandably so, but the city of Berwyn and the police department will not assist any federal agency with respect to anything regarding immigration, deportation. So we stand by that, we stand by our ordinance, a welcoming city. That's my statement. I believe, if anybody wants to take, I believe there were some extra copies on the table of the Illinois law from Kwame Raul, as well as a summary of it. Sir?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Domingo Ramirez.
Is that on, Domingo?
Hello?
Hello? Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you made that statement, I appreciate it, but we were, that's why I'm here, in behalf of my Latin community, my Hispanic community that's living worried, we were expecting a statement from you a lot sooner, that's why I'm here today to ask that question, but I appreciate you have said it already. The other thing I want to say is that I haven't got my answer, my question answered in regards to Eddie Garcia and that $600,000 that he sold his business that he came in here and got, asking for $450,000, leaving with $600,000, selling that business within one year. What happens to that money?
I think what you should do is probably contact the Berwyn Development Corporation since they handled whatever TIF was given to Eddie Garcia over there.
Not gonna argue, but the city of Berwyn should have signatures and, I mean, structure in place not allowing for somebody to do that ever again.
Okay.
I mean, you know, that's a lot of money, he just, he hit the lottery, he donated $12,000 to your campaign and, and hit the lottery.
There is a clawback when, if you got TIF assistance and you sell a business, he hasn't sold his business, but okay.
My last statement here is that, reason I started speaking 15, 20 years ago, Bob, was to profile in my Hispanic community with these CPO checks, you know what I mean? I'm just gonna get to this, if it's not profiling motivated, I asked that the $2 million that was received last year that be put back into the community, any further ticket revenue, tickets and fines revenues, if they're not racially motivated profiling, get that money, put it back into the community, let each ward use that money as they see fit with the citizens in mind, with their input, if it's not motivated by profiling.
Okay.
The other thing I asked Mr. Lovero is that, this is an election, intimidation and harassment of any kind while people are profiling is unacceptable, can you agree to that?
Of course, and I've been harassed and profiled myself, so.
Well, it has no place in Berwyn politics, I mean, that's why we need to change in Berwyn, it's unacceptable and we won't accept it. Everything I ever posted is true, like, supported by facts, I will not, my word is, means a lot to me.
Domingo, you've spoken there several times and a lot of it was not fact, so.
You should correct me right there so we can go over it, everything I've said was supported by facts.
I've tried.
The profiling of my people for 23 years is, is supported by facts.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, thank you Mayor Lovero for saying something about what we're all here to hear about, I don't think it should take the news reporters to be here for you to actually do it.
I didn't even know they were supposed to be here.
Good evening, my name is Leti Garcia, and I live in 30th and Maple, here in Berwyn. Mayor Lovero, a neighbor of mine received a political flyer of yours that received a week ago and graciously shared it with me, since for some odd reason, I don't receive any literature, your BS, I mean Berwyn's strong newspaper, or any information relating to Berwyn City information, or elections, or ICE. Anyways, in this literature piece, you talk about Berwyn's safety, Berwyn is one of the safest cities of its size, supporting police patrols, a safe and stronger Berwyn, et cetera. And I think the safety of our communities is something regardless of what party slate or side you're on, is something we can all agree on. We all want to feel safe, we want our children, families, neighbors, and feel, and friends to feel safe too. So I ask you, Mayor Lovero and council, where are your public statements before today, plans, and actions to inform our Latino and LGBTQ plus communities in regards to deportations, ICE rates, threats, and harassments? Berwyn is 65% Latino, and also has a huge LGBTQ population, and right now, we don't feel safe. Scared mothers are having their children miss school, fathers are missing work, stores and restaurants are also being affected with low customer turnout, and we just don't feel safe. There have been reports of ICE attempts in schools nearby, teachers and school administrators want to know they will also be protected for their actions in lockdowns. Just a couple of days ago, someone harassed me to go back to Venezuela, and that they were gonna call ICE on me. I am a Mexican-American, but that is neither here nor there, while I was informing a resident in Spanish where she believes what she can do if ICE agents were in her area, this shouldn't come from me, this should come from you. So I urge you to set a plan in place for our community, and let our communities know they are truly safe here in Berwyn. Lastly, your political flyer also says your radical opponents are against safety, against our police patrols, and against our first responders. Oh, Mayor Lovero, I am not against safety, my family is here in Berwyn, Berwyn is my home, my children go to the park and to the events here, I want Berwyn to be safe, I want my family, friends, and neighbors to feel safe too. I am not against the police, my brother is a police officer, I want him and all police officers to feel safe and go home to their families the same way I want my brother to go to his family. I am not against teachers, my sister is a teacher, I want her, her coworkers, and administration to feel safe, and that they also protected in their actions to protect the children in schools where they should be safe. I am a first responder, I am a registered nurse, a registered nurse that worked here for Berwyn during COVID, I want us to be safe in our communities and our workplace too. If wanting a safety, a safe community for my Latino population, my LGBTQ plus community, my police brothers and sisters, and fellow first responders, and my neighbors is what you would consider a radical, then I will gladly accept it. After all, radical is one of the nicest things your majority of your council has called me. I want Berwyn to be safe for everyone, you should not marginalize or dictate whom safety applies to here in Berwyn, we all deserve a safe Berwyn.
Thank you.
Good evening, I appreciate your comments in the beginning, because that's the reason I'm here. My name is Elizabeth Ojeda Jimenez, and I have had the privilege of living in Berwyn for over 25 years. I come to you not as the president of the Board of Education in Berwyn South, but as an individual. In the wake of 2016 national election, our community was gripped with fear, our students, our neighbors, and our families felt uncertain and unsafe, especially as the climate in our country shift, as the climate in our country shifted. In April of 2017, the Berwyn City Council took a critical step to reassure our residents and protect our community's well-being, they passed the welcoming city ordinance anonymously, a promise that Berwyn would stand as a safe heaven for everyone. Thank you to the 2017 council for their unwavering commitment to our community, and most importantly, I want to remind you that now is your turn, all eight of you, it is your turn. It is your turn to advocate and reevaluate the ordinance that was adopted. This ordinance, supported by our diverse community at the time, included organizations like Illinois Coalition for Immigration Rights, the Westover Action Project, the Interfaith Leadership Project, and Berwyn Comunidad de Acción, which I am a co-founder. It was a declaration that everyone was welcome here, it is strengthening our city's commitment to protecting all of our residents regardless of immigration status, and clarified that our local law enforcement would not cooperate with immigration officials. The welcoming city ordinance made a promise to our community that everyone is welcome here, the ordinance was also clear in prohibiting city employees from creating any registries based on race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, immigration status, or national or ethnic origin, this was not a legal safeguard. It was a statement of belonging, safety, and unity for all of us. Today, I come before you with a request, I ask that you revisit and strengthen the welcoming city ordinance to ensure that our city remains a true sanctuary for all, we must reexamine the ordinance and assess if there are any gaps or loopholes that could potentially be exploited. I urge this council to consider the following, strengthening protection to ensure that no city database or information is shared with a federal immigration agencies, expanded safeguards to further clarify the Berwyn's law enforcement will not participate in civil immigration enforcement under any circumstances, eliminating exceptions to three protections to ensure our ordinance stands as strong and clear as ever, and its commitment to our community's safety. Finally, I encourage the council to invite community members to be part of this review process, people who live and breathe the values of inclusivity, safety, and respect every day, we are the ones who know the challenges, we are the ones who have lived through the fear and uncertainty, together, let's continue the legacy of being a city that welcomes everyone with open arms, no exceptions, please invite the community to be part of it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Dance of the 7th Ward, I'm here to speak as everyone else is on the Berwyn welcoming city ordinance tonight. First, I'd like to thank you all for hearing us, and for the opportunity that, to be here in front of you today. I also want to give a thanks to Alderman Pavone for meeting with me, for hearing concerns from fellow Berwyn neighbors and activists, as well as for the work on the initial amendment, expanding language from ICE to any federal agency. Our welcoming sitting ordinance helps to reduce our fear, build our trust, encourage cooperation engagement with our neighbors, I am proud that our city has made this commitment to ensure we feel safe, respected, and valued. But as we see more federal changes, we must also ensure that this is a living document that adapts to the changing times. We've already seen immigration agents in and around Berwyn, a new executive order from Trump, which includes languages establishing a Homeland Security Task Force, and states that that task force shall also include representation from relevant state and local law enforcement. The recent developments put our neighbors at risk, and we need to take a stand, we need to work to keep Berwyn the welcoming city we know and love. First, please vote for the amendments put forth by Alderman Pavone tonight. Second, we'd like to ask for additional amendments to help cover some loopholes, strengthen our ordinance to close the loopholes that permit Berwyn to participate in civil immigration enforcement, explicitly state that the agencies such as the BPD will not join any federal agency task force to engage in immigration enforcement activities, expand data protections beyond what was originally outlined to ensure emergent technologies and digital data cannot be utilized, work to ensure safety in our city and public buildings. You've already made a statement tonight, which we very much appreciate, I was going to ask for that as well tonight as everybody else has, but I just want to thank everybody for hearing me, and for your continued efforts to continually amend this document so that we can stay the welcoming city that we are.
Thank you.
My name is Angelica Keen, I live at 2311 Scoville. Thank you Mayor Lovero for your opening statement, I come for the same reason as the speakers before me, I cannot say it any better than they have, I just add one additional perspective. I'm a child of a Holocaust survivor, my parents came to the States with two children, two suitcases, I was one of those children fleeing Nazi persecution in Germany. I am seeing many of the same trends today that my parents saw in the 30s, God willing, it doesn't get that far, but it did not start with the gas chambers, it started with detentions. I'm asking because Berwyn has such a strong social media presence, that in addition to making a plan, executing the plan, please announce the plan, announce our city's values to our community members so that we express them publicly, jointly, together, that's the only way, that's one way we stay safe, by continuing to express our values, valuing, supporting democracy, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Michael Bain, 7th Ward. I do feel better, I really appreciate you saying what you said at the beginning, and it cuts out a lot of what I'm gonna have to say, which is better for everyone too, so. I wanted to talk, add to what you said though, and talk a little bit about my, my personal experience with, with what's been going on. My, my father's worked in agriculture, farming out agriculture for over four decades, and during my formative years, I got to travel with him, since the 80s, we'd drive around to visit farms all over the country, and, and one thing was always clear to me, and it's that migrant workers, many of them undocumented, they were the ones that were, they're the backbone of our agricultural industry, they're the ones in the fields doing the hard labor, puts food on all our tables. And so, when I hear someone use the term illegals to imply an entire group of people that are criminals, or leeching off of our country, or, or something to that extent, it feels very disingenuous to me, because in reality, we're all benefiting from their contributions every single day. Now, fast forward 15, 20 years, I was considering a career in the legal profession, and I asked a criminal defense attorney, how do you defend someone you know is guilty? And, and one step further, especially what it means getting them off on what many of us are gonna call technicalities. And so he gives me this answer that has stuck with me to this day, and he told me, and I don't remember word for word, but something like this, he's, when you fight for those rights, you're not just protecting the accused, you're ensuring that those same rights remain available to the innocent people who rely on them from their personal freedoms. So that principle, it's not a new one, protecting, that protecting the rights of the accused ultimately safeguards the rights of the innocent, you go back 240 years to almost the founding of this country, and one of our founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin, made the statement, "It is better that 100 guilty persons should escape than one innocent person should suffer." And he specifically used the word "suffer," he didn't say, you know, be fined, or be imprisoned, or be detained, he said "suffer," and that statement reinforces the very foundation of our country's justice system, that we should err on the side of protecting people, not punishing them indiscriminately. Yet today, we're seeing that principle flipped on its head, entire populations are being villainized to justify the impersonal persecution of those who cannot defend themselves, and this has led to an overly aggressive enforcement of policies that are harming innocent people. And you'll, take this to our community, you said it yourself, large parts of our community are in fear right now, and maybe that isn't some of you personally, and, and I envy you if that's the case, because I am fearful. So those that say if you're here legally, you don't have to worry, that's simply not true. I'm married to a Latina woman, a US-born citizen, born to US-born citizen parents, but that doesn't stop me from having legitimate concerns that she could be stopped, questioned, or detained, and even at its most basic level, that is a traumatic experience. And that's to say nothing of my seven-year-old, sometimes Spanish-speaking daughter, no parent should have to subject their child to that kind of fear or uncertainty. This is not a call to protect felons or violent criminals, I don't want migrant felons, or naturalized felons, or any felons or violent criminals living next to me, okay? This is a call to protect our community through a very scary and trying time. Whatever benefits there may be to the enforcement of this overreaching immigration and policy, it is far outweighed by the harm and trauma that is being done to our neighborhoods. This is a call to support our neighbors and our children, so tonight, I'm asking the city council, just like the mayor did, please support the amendments proposed, our welcoming city ordinance, even if this issue doesn't affect you directly, it is very real for so many of your constituents, thank you.
Hello, and good evening, everybody, my name's Isa de la Jaimas, and I'm the daughter of two proud Latinos from the 1st Ward. I came here to touch on two separate but intersectional topics affecting our city at the moment, the second being the ordinance, which I'll make that short due to the mayor's comment. The first thing I'm gonna touch on is the egregious comments that came to light this past week made by my alderman, Scott Lennon. For those of you unaware, at the end of last week, messages allegedly made by our alderman were made public on a Berwyn Facebook page. These messages depicted our alderman's fear of the growing Latino presence in politics, both men and women alike. They showcase his belief that white men will be pushed out of the political and social space because of our gain representation. When reading these messages, I was disappointed, but truly not surprised. Disappointed because over the years, I'd heard both my parents talk positively about Mr. Lennon, and their one-off occasions they had with him, such as when you returned my father's keys when he dropped them in the streets, or when you met my mother downtown offhand and you guys enjoyed a nice conversation. However, every time I came to a city council meeting, whether it was during my undergrad or for personal interest, I always noticed there was a clear disconnect between where our more diverse alders situated themselves compared to our white male alders. To put it clearly, these comments made, allegedly made by our alder, are disgusting, and truly show to light the type of person that he is. Mr. Lennon, if you have fear that the white man is losing their total control of politics, I'm letting you know that it is happening, and our presence in politics, Latinos, Asians, and African-Americans, all alike, will only grow. We're tired of being pushed aside to the sideline by individuals like you who fear us and our representation. Moving on to my second point, this was touching on the ordinance, actually, no, I didn't, I'm gonna circle back. I call for an open and independent investigation of Mr. Lennon's actions and words, to ensure others you employ understand the damage and pain racist remarks cause not only to the individual, but the community at large. That was, that was quoting Senator Villanueva in response to our 2022 incident where other city Berwyn employee made racist remarks against a contractor. I'm asking for the same type of response to be done here, and to be done swiftly, so that these allegations can be made true or falsified, and any practices of Mr. Lennon as an alder since 2019 can be checked for any bias. Wrapping that point up, I do want to still touch on the ordinance just briefly, if you all feel that there's any judgment or misalignment in your heart with this ordinance, I ask you to reconsider. If keeping your constituency safe is not enough to vote for this amendment, I ask you to consider the effect that it will have on school attendance rates, the patronage of Berwyn businesses, and the overall vibrancy that brings Berwyn the livelihood that it does, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone, my name is Blenna Barrete, I grew up in Berwyn and I now own in the 7th Ward. Thank you for your opening statement, in part, I was here to address some of that, but I also want to encourage you all to critically take a lens, a really good look into the existing ordinance, but also what you're all proposing, please protect the people that you represent and make sure that they're, all of our bases are covered, I know you've already addressed much of this, thank you. But I also wanted to talk to you about the election season, I see most of the candidates are here tonight, and as you're all here, I want you to please hear me when I say as the election season is ramping up, and you're all going door-to-door knocking, please be careful with the way that you approach people's homes. There is a lot of fear that is happening in the community, and I want you to consider how somebody from a different background might react to an unfamiliar person approaching, and therefore, in order to avoid causing fear, can you please not wear maybe innocuous clothing, dark colors, some type of sunglasses, hoodie, I approached campaigners this weekend that were covered up, wearing a hoodie, sunglasses, a hat, and a black puffer vest, who's, who's cosplaying as a civilian right now? Rightfully so, when there are people coming up to people's doors asking for family members by name, our community is scared, they're, they're, they don't know what to do. So instead, I ask that you please wear some type of warm color clothing, some type of coordinated clothing, spread messages that you are out campaigning, identify yourself as volunteers, as campaigners, please, I understand you are all incumbents, please do not use words like "I am with the city," "I am with the mayor," "I'm with the alderman's office," "I'm with the town," these are all words that incite fear in our community, and they cause a lot more harm than good. So I ask for your empathy, awareness, some reflection, and please consider how your actions impact the people that you are all seeking to serve, and let's ensure that impact is one of trust and safety, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, you've got the last comment there, sir.
I will hopefully do my way best to speak well.
Because then I have one more comment that I want to share with the alderman.
Yes, sir. So, for those-
This is the last person.
So for those in attendance, and for those on the board, and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lovero, allow me to reintroduce myself, my name is Gerardo Nava, I'm a former resident of the 1st Ward, I was a acting teacher here in the community, working in the District 98, and working with the Arts Diocese School over here by St. Leonard's over here many, a couple sometime years ago, currently work in Chicago right now, but I also currently live in Cicero right now. Now, I take the opportunity right now to speak on behalf of a few friends, and one person in particular who was not able to attend this meeting today, but I also would like to share a little bit of my perspective, a little bit as both a friend, a neighbor, and a resident of a community that lacks the privilege and opportunity to see a community that has a welcome city ordinance, and you and the members of the board here today have a genuine opportunity to kind of enhance that ordinance, to set an example of what a welcomed city looks like, and what a transparent and prosperous community can look like under the welcome city ordinance. So let me just go off by reading the comments here real quick, a gentleman who will be referred to as DL for the time being right now, give me one small second here, here we go, okay. This gentleman, this gentleman writes here tonight, "The welcome city ordinance is on the agenda for tonight, Alderman Pavone is proposing amendments to make it a little bit stronger, it would be a great opportunity to tell you and the council why that's important. I, I'm worried that there will be loopholes which would allow Berwyn to round the ordinance and help ICE, or that they might help ICE secretly anyway, I would love to see some accountability in place in referencing to the enhancement of the welcome city ordinance, so that we can find out," again, this is, this person quoting here, "if, so we can find out if a Berwyn police officer is helping ICE or Homeland Security, that they may potentially be fired by not following the ordinance." Here are my words in regards to tonight's ordinance being proposed, amended, amendments being made. My personal thoughts, given the climate of politics, that we are facing tensions and agendas that are going to be pushed aggressively, and we need to protect our residents, including those that have intentions of becoming citizens in our community, trust is important. Just in quick context, real quick, I was not here current, at the time being when you made your statement, and I'm sure it was a wonderful one, I'd love to revisit that at some point, so I apologize in advance, it just may not match the tone of what you were speaking earlier, so I apologize in advance. Mr. Lovero, you have claimed the police support you, considering that there are some members of the police force that may be eager or willing to work with ICE, that may hurt you more than that statement typically may help you. Many residents in Berwyn are Latino, past actions of ICE- Past actions of ICE specifically, under the previous Trump administration many years ago, was a dangerous and alarming one, to say the least. Citizens have been questioned and been deported for being Latino or the assumptions that they were not citizens." And I know we, me and other members of the community that live around Cicero or live in Berwyn currently right now, have been victims of facial profiling. And it would be, and it's certainly seeming like it's being worse done now with this current presidential term. "Enhancing the Welcome City ordinance isn't a topic of immigration. Rather, it should be considered as a solution for the sake of building community public safety and trust with its residents." Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to... I'm going to let the last two speakers speak because I don't want to be accused of shutting anybody off, so go ahead.
I'm going to make it real quick, Mayor. First of all, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I came here not as a candidate, but as a concerned citizen and a former alderman. You did touch on the two points that I wanted to mention. Appreciate that. I just want to ask you to expand a little bit on the last one, and I understand that you have put something out on your Facebook page and the city website. Great. Unfortunately, there's a lot of residents that don't go to those sites. If you could publicly say something to ease the anxiety that they're going through, I would appreciate it. One of the things that I can tell you is that I have a lot of families calling me that are more concerned about their children because they don't understand what's going on. If you could ease that fear and anxiety, would be very appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I also make this brief. Luz Chavez, 16th and Ridgeland. I am glad that you made a statement and support. I'm disappointed that it took residents asking you to make one today for you to finally make one. It was long overdue.
There's another fact that's not true because nobody asked me to make that statement.
Okay, we asked you. Several people asked on social media, and you know you have your little trolls looking for us on social media, so please. Please.
You're not really good with the backflips, but go ahead.
You're really horrible at lines, so... So another thing that happened is the Welcoming City ordinance was created with community. So I really hope that these changes that are made today, they're very minimal, easy changes. They're like the lowest-hanging fruit, so I'm glad that everybody is agreeing to make it because it's not a hard decision. It's not a hard decision to match the major change that Trump made. So I really hope, though, that it's just the first step in a series of conversations with community, suggestions that residents have already been working on before we noticed that the Welcoming Ordinance changes was on the agenda. And again, because the original ordinance was done in community, it should be amended in community. Last, I just wanted to thank you. I want to thank... Right now, there's a huge amount of fear. I have tons and tons of people reaching out to me saying they're too scared to leave their homes because of the ICE raids. We know that ICE has been at 15th and East today. ICE has been at Clinton and Riverside. ICE has been at McNeil. We have set up rapid response teams so that when we get notified of a sighting, right away, members from the rapid response team, several of who are here today, go out and make sure that it's ICE. We already know how to identify them. We document the instances. In none of the instances have I seen anyone else be there besides the volunteers from the rapid response team. So I really want to thank everybody that is making time to be there and protect community. Also, for the folks that are too scared to leave their homes to even get groceries for their neighbors, there are lots of folks that have volunteered, regular community members that have volunteered to drop off groceries, purchase groceries, and leave them at the homes of our migrant neighbors. There are people that are sharing and creating Know Your Rights workshops, so I'm very appreciative of all the folks working on that. There have been people that have been reaching out, know more ways that they can help. More people are responding to me quickly, are messaging me more quickly than I'm able to respond to them. So I just want to say a big thank you to everybody that has reached out because you're showing what Berwyn is about. I should actually be looking at you all, you know, people that are here that have helped. You all are showing what Berwyn is about. Your step of doing the Welcoming Ordinance is your first step, I think, right? And I hope to see much more action from you all.
So Commissioner Aguilar is having a Know Your Rights seminar. I'll have to get that information from Claudia. She has that information. But I would suggest that we met with several committees when we first passed this ordinance when I was mayor, the Welcoming Ordinance. I think it's a good idea that we meet with some of these committees, but I also think it's a good idea for us to scrutinize what the Illinois Legislature passed and maybe incorporate some of that into strengthening our ordinance also. So we can take a look at that.
Yeah, and if I can say something as well really quickly, I would be happy to open up the Human Relations Committee to the community to make sure that those conversations are happening publicly, and organizers, and rapid response, and mutual aid workers are able to be a part of that process.
That's a good idea. Great. Okay. Item C1, please.
Item C1 are the regular city council minutes of January 14th, 2025.
I will make the motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of January 14th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Wywood, to approve the city council minutes of January 14th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item D1, please.
Item D1 is from Public Works Director Schiller. He would like us to award the lead service line replacement bid to Miller Pipelines in the amount of $2,238,478.70 plus a 3% contingency.
It'd be my motion to concur with Director Schiller's recommendation of approving the bid and execution of the contract for the lead service line replacement year one to Miller Pipeline in the amount of $2,238,478.70 plus a 3% contingency. Fixing the necessary signatures and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, second by Pavone, to approve and execute the contract for the lead service line replacement awarded to Miller Pipelines in the amount of $2,238,478.70 plus a 3% contingency. Fixing the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor? On the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pavone.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item F1, please.
Item F1 is a request to waive the bid process for the Berwyn softball fields at Gennaro Park West Fields and award the contract to the lowest proposed quote to Team Real Inc. in the sum of $35,141.
So basically, what happened is our T-ball league and our girls' softball teams have been informed that they're not going to be able to get the time that they needed or had before at the Berwyn Park District. So we need to get these fields done so that they have a place for the girls' softball team and the T-ball league. So that's why I put this up, based on the quotes.
I motion to concur with awarding the contract to Tim Real Incorporated for the total sum of $35,141. This is the lowest quote received, and proceeding with this vendor allows us to maximize cost savings while ensuring timely project completion.
Second.
Motion by Wywood, second by Lennon, to concur with the request for awarding the contract to Team Real for the total sum of $35,141 for the two ball fields at the west end of Gennaro Park, and execute the necessary contract. All those in favor? On the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pavone.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item F2, please.
Item F2 is an amendment to Section 234.001 of the codified ordinance outlining the composition of the Berwyn Fire Department.
I move that we concur with Mayor Lovero's request to amend Section 234.001 of the codified ordinance outlining the composition of the Berwyn Fire Department.
Second.
Motion by Laia. Pardon? No, you don't have to read it. No. Motion by Laia, second by Wywood, to adopt the amendment ordinance for 234.001 outlining the composition of the Berwyn Fire Department. All those in favor? On the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pavone.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item F3, please.
Item F3 is an amendment to Section 242.03B as in boy of the codified ordinance reclassifying the titles of the Berwyn Fire Department appointments.
I move that we concur with Mayor Lovero's request to amend Section 242.03B of the codified ordinance, reclassifying the titles of the Berwyn Fire Department appointments.
Second.
Motion by Laia, second by Wywood, to adopt the amended ordinance of Chapter and Section 242.03B, which would adopt the concurrent titles for the appointed officers of the Berwyn Fire Department. All those in favor? On the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pavone.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Oh, Ruiz.
Eight.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item G1, please.
Item G1 is denial request for handicap parking spaces at 2645 Clarence and 2118 Elmwood.
It'd be my motion to accept Clerk Paul's communication as information, denying application 1520 handicap parking application 1524 and 1519.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, second by Pavone, to concur with Clerk Paul's denial of the handicap spaces for the application labeled 1524 and 1519. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I1, please.
Item I1 is a communication from Alderman Pavone requesting to amend our Welcoming City ordinance, Section 620.25B as in boy and 620.25D as in David.
Before I make my motion, I would just like to say a few words about the moment we're in right now and how important it is that we, as a community, as leadership, and as a city, come together to support, protect, fortify, and take care of our undocumented neighbors. Right now, as many people have shared today, they're feeling alone. They're feeling anxious and attacked. They're afraid that they will be separated from their families and children, sent back maybe to a country they no longer have a connection to, and have their lives uprooted and destroyed because of hatred and bigotry. It is important for us, in this moment, to come together and figure out how we can best support our neighbors. This is not something that's happening far away. This is not something that's on a television screen in a city across the country where you can point a finger at a person you don't know and say, "That person is a criminal," or "That person deserved it," or "That person should have known better." This is happening here to your neighbors' families, to your daughter's classmates, to the person who owns a restaurant in our community that you go to regularly. It's happening to people we engage with at church, at school, at work, in our own neighborhood. These are the people that make our neighborhood beautiful, the people that make this community Berwyn. This is no longer a national issue. It is our responsibility as leaders, as community members, and neighbors to do everything in our power to look after and take care of one another. We also need to support the organizers doing this work. Today, I'm committing myself and my team and my services to support those working on mutual aid efforts throughout our community to help our undocumented neighbors. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can build and change policy while also doing the necessary community organizing to ensure that our community remains safe, supported, and strong. And the people doing this work are doing critical work, and I want to support those efforts. I'm also committed to continuing to improve the Welcoming City ordinance, not just for today, not just for the immediate actions needed to close this dangerous gap in our ordinance, but to also ensure that we remain flexible and responsive to the challenges that continue to emerge. So with that, it would be my motion to refer this communication to the city attorney's office so they can draft the proper amendments based on the changes outlined in this communication.
Second.
Who seconded it? Motion by Pavone, second by Laia, to refer the communication to the city attorney's office to draft the appropriate amendments as outlined and requested by the communication. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I2, please.
Item I2 is a communication from Alderman Pavone. It's the ad hoc rat abatement minutes from November 13th, 2024. He's asking that they be entered as informational.
It'd be my motion to accept these meeting minutes for November 13th as informational.
Second.
Motion by Pavone, second by Carmichael, to accept the minutes as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J1.
Item J1 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca to authorize the settlement of 23 CV 17084 in the amount of $6,500.
It'd be my motion to concur with City Attorney Bertucca, settle case 23 CV 17084, the amount of $6,500, based in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Fait, second by Wywood, to concur with City Attorney Bertucca and authorize the settlement of the captioned case in the amount of $6,500 as based on authority granted in executive session. All those in favor? On the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pavone.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Before I call for item J2, Claudia, could you please give us the time and date of Commissioner Aguilar's Know Your Rights?
16th District Commissioner Aguilar is hosting a Know Your Rights virtual workshop on Wednesday, January 29th at 3:00 PM. We will be sharing this immediately on our city social media and also posting on our website. We have shared it also with Commissioner Frank Aguilar, and he has expressed of also coordinating a similar workshop here as well.
Okay, thank you. Item J2, please.
Item J2 is a communication from Police Chief Semaglia. He's requesting to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Brookfield Zoo Police Department.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Semaglia's request to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Brookfield Zoo Police Department.
Second.
Motion by Laia, second by Wywood, to concur with Chief Semaglia and allow the entering into the IGA with the Brookfield Zoo Police Department. Fixing the necessary signatures and place it on its way. All those in favor? On the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pavone.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Did you need to say something, Chief? Okay. Item J3, please.
Item J3 is a communication from Police Chief Semaglia. It's a request of a probationary police officer from the current eligibility list.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Semaglia's request to hire one probationary police officer from the current eligibility list.
Second.
Motion by Laia, second by Wywood, to concur with Chief Semaglia, allow him to contact the current Police and Fire Commission to hire one candidate from the eligibility list of probationary police officers due to the retirement of Detective Rivera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J4, please.
Item J4 is a communication from Police Chief Semaglia granting permission to the North Berwyn Park District for their annual Easter parade to be held on April 19th of this year between 9:30 AM and 11:00 AM.
I move that we accept this communication from Police Chief Semaglia granting permission for the North Berwyn Park District's annual Easter Day Parade between 9:30 AM, 11:00 AM on April 19th, 2025, as informational. Second.
Motion by Laia, second by Pavone, to consider the communication granting the Easter parade to the North Berwyn Park District on April 19th as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J5, please.
Item J5 is a communication from Assistant Finance Director Dash. It's a resolution authorizing and approving the opening of a money market account with Wintrust Commercial Banking.
I'll make the motion to approve the establishment of MakeSafe, Max Safe's government funds money market account with Wintrust Community Bank for the city fund balance reserves. Fixing the necessary signatures and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Wywood, to concur with the Finance Department and approve the resolution establishing the Max Safe Government Funds Money Market Account with Wintrust Community Bank. All those in favor? On the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Fait. Pavone.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J6, please.
J6 is a communication from Assistant Finance Director Dash. He's asking for approval of an agreement with GW and Associates PC to perform the 2024 audit services for the proposed fee of $95,000.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with GW and Associates PC to perform the 2024 annual audit of the city of Berwyn, fix the necessary signature, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Wywood, to concur with the Finance Department, approve the agreement with GW and Associates PC to perform the 24 audit services for the sum of $95,000, fix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor, on the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Laisha.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pavone.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J7, please.
Item J7 is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller, recommendation to approve Phase III construction agreement with CBBEL not to exceed the amount of $1,757,230.
It'd be my motion to concur with Director Schiller's approval of staff's recommendation of the attached engineering agreement with CBBL in the amount of $1,757,230. Fix the necessary signatures and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aronella, to concur with Director Schiller and approve the attached engineering agreement with CBBEL not to exceed an amount of $1,757,230. Fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor, on the call, the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Wywood.
Aye.
Laisha.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pavone. Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. The consent agenda.